I don't have to tell you things are bad. Everybody knows things are bad. Everybody's out of work or scared of losing their job. The dollar buys a nickel's worth. Banks are going bust. Shopkeepers keep a gun under the counter. Punks are running wild in the street. There's nobody anywhere who seems to know what to do and there's no end to it. The air is unfit to breathe and our food is unfit to eat. We sit watching our TVs while some local newscaster tells us that today we had fifteen homicides and sixty-three violent crimes, as if that's the way it's supposed to be. We know things are bad, worse than bad. It's like everything everywhere is going crazy, so we don't go out anymore. We sit in the house and slowly the world we're living in is getting smaller and all we say is, please, at least leave us alone in our living rooms. Let me have my toaster and my TV and my steel belted radios and I won't say anything. Just leave us alone. Well, I'm not gonna leave you alone. I want you to get mad. I don't want you to protest. I don't want you to riot. I don't want you to write to your congressman because I wouldn't know what to tell you to write. I don't know what to do about the depression and the inflation and the Russians and the crime in the street. All I know is that first, you've got to get mad. You've got to say, I'm a human being. God damn it. My life has value. So, I want you to get up now. I want all of you to get up out of your chairs. I want you to get up right now and go to the window, open it, and stick your head out and yell, I'm as mad as hell and I'm not gonna take this anymore.
Well, hello there, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this very special episode 405. We've been trying to have episode 405 for two whole days. This is really special. I've never had something like this happen. We planned episode 405 Monday and then we kicked it down the road a little bit until Tuesday because the meeting went so long Friday, or Monday night. And I didn't even think about the State of the Union being last night. And then yesterday, when 405 was ready for last night at nine, I then had to adjust it for today because we did the State of the Union, of course, last night. But never fear, ladies and gentlemen, because we're here and we're gonna have a very special guest with us this evening here in just a few moments. We're gonna be bringing on Mr. Audi Barber, somebody that a lot of you haven't seen in a long time. We've been waiting. Now, now the only thing is if we can get Brandon to come back to us, then we'll have everybody kind of back here at home. So, hope you're doing well. Please consider giving us the like, that, that all very important like, if you could do that, that would be fantastic. Hit the thumb if you're here on YouTube. Of course, share the show with everyone. You know, that's the big thing. And if you're watching live, which of course live would be Wednesday, March 5th, nine, ten, then you'll want to comment over here at the right-hand side. If you're watching in the future via live replay, then you'll want to comment down below. So, that's, that's what that is. If you want to contact us here at the show, that's real easy. All you gotta do is reach out to us at one of these things. You can find me at the studio line there, the email for me, the email for the show. There's all of our social medias. And just one really quick note that I'm gonna be saying now until the end of the Facebook changeover, and I still need to find out exactly when it is. I don't know if it's March 29th or if it's April 29th, but it's one of those days. Facebook is getting ready to change. Facebook is going to change how they let us do videos and how they store videos. So, in a very quick order, we will no longer be, I guess we'll put videos out on Facebook, but you can't count on Facebook as a way to find us. So, we need to be able in the next, you know, twenty-some days to be able to start slowly having all of our Facebook people come over to either YouTube or Rumble or Twitter, you know, one of those three ways. So, we'll talk about that more as it gets closer, but I just wanted to let everybody know that. It's called censorship 2.0. That's exactly right. And it look really, you can still put contact content out there. They just, they're not gonna store it the way they used to. It used to be unlimited storage and it's not that way anymore. So, it doesn't really make sense to put things out there that people can watch into the future if it can't be there. So, that's just kind of a crazy thing. So, that's that. Okay. So, tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be talking, we're gonna, we're gonna have to go back in our mind a couple of days. We're gonna have to go back to Monday, Monday, the third. And we're gonna be talking about the Muncie City Council meeting. We're gonna be talking a little bit about the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. And I also have kind of a breaking news thing to talk about tonight. I'm gonna drop this on Audi. I don't know. I've not discussed this with him. So, we'll talk with him. We'll do all of this. And we'll, we'll see what, we'll see what goes on. But without further ado, lady, we'll see. Well, wait just one second. I think he's getting a last-minute drink. You can drink it. You're fine. We'll, we'll bring on the 10th Councilman, Mr. Audi Barber.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey, hey, what's going on?
Not a whole lot. Chris had me on a three-month paid vacation, so.
Yeah, right, right, right.
So, I took it.
Yeah, yeah. Are you sick?
No.
You sound a little, a little sick. I've been, I've been dealing with it, so I didn't know.
Nope, not sick that I know of.
Um, so.
Just sick of the dumbasses.
Yo, tell me about it. Tell me about it. So.
I watched a bunch of them last night. My God, I hate to call myself a Democrat.
Isn't that crazy? How, how do you not cheer for like some of the good things?
Right.
Like, I understand, I understand.
You gotta cheer for the people.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right.
For the kids that lost their lives, the.
Yeah, yeah, man.
The thirteen-year-old boy, you know.
I can understand having policy differences or this or that, but, and, and whatnot, and, and even expressing, um, expressing, you know, disappointment or whatever. And, and I think that that Al Green that was kicked out, I think if, if he would have went on and, and had a little show right there at the beginning, if he would have just then sat down and shut up, he would have been okay. And I've seen some people say, First Amendment, First Amendment. We have to remember, it's a little bit different because you don't lose your First Amendment as an elected official. However, it's the decorum thing. Had that been a member of the public, I mean, look, they're still, they've still gotta get things done. The other thing is, that's not a situation where there is back and forth. It's not like a council meeting or whatnot. So, it's a little bit different. But, uh, you know, it is common sense.
I mean, they would have escorted a public person out.
Sure, 100%.
It's just, it's just that type of quorum that they had last night.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, uh, before we get into the city council meeting and we do kind of the old stuff from a couple of days ago, do you mind if we watch the really brief Board of Works meeting that occurred today?
How long did it last? Two minutes?
Uh, yeah.
Two and a half.
That's exactly right, Finch. Yes, that's exactly right. You're 100% right. Hey, did you hear about the, uh, the Congressman that died suddenly after the, after the event last night? Yeah, there was a Democrat from, uh, from Texas area who, uh, died, uh.
Al Green?
No, no, it wasn't. That's what I looked. I was like, was it Al Green? Uh, but no, it was not, it was not, uh, it was not Al Green. Um, but it was the man who took over for Sheila Jackson Lee. It was Sylvester Turner dies at seventy after attending Trump's congressional address. And I don't know if you're familiar with Sheila Jackson Lee. My brother lived in Houston, Texas, so I, from time to time, listened to Mark Barry down in Houston, Texas. And, and he always had this big back and forth with Sheila Jackson Lee. She was nuts, absolutely nuts, but she died a while back and they put this seventy-year-old. Why are we continuing to put seventy-year-old people as first time? Like, this is my first term in Congress and I'm seventy. That makes no flipping sense.
Cause they're done with the regular jobs and they need something to do.
Right? That, that like, kind of like the, the cherry on top of a, of a wonderful career as a public servant, stealing from the public and, and not holding a real job like normal human beings.
I seen something flash across the bottom of the screen. Audi, tell my friends you're not progressive because they keep giving me hard. I'm not progressive.
Oh, no. What in the hell? Not at all.
You know, one, one thing that Trump did say last night, how soon they forget, how soon they forget, we've got a Kennedy in the White House again.
Yeah, right.
And the Democrats aren't cheering him. What the fuck?
Damn.
I'm a Kennedy crap.
Yeah. All right, here we go. Here's the Muncie City, or Muncie Board of Works meeting, and this is important because this is gonna tie into the breaking news we're gonna talk about here in just one moment. So, let's, this is five minutes long.
Ooh, damn.
Oh, yeah.
They get paid overtime today?
Yeah, right.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the March 5th Board of Public Works and Safety Meeting. If you'll please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Ooh, Ted's gone again.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Can you back that up? Did Linda quit saying, "One nation under God"?
Yeah, she never has. Where are you, Dan?
She would say, "One nation".
Yeah, hold on. Let's see. Let's, all right, hold on.
I think she skipped under "one nation".
And to the March 5th Board of Public Works and Safety Meeting, if you'll please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
She's progressive.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Wow. Yeah, she just stops halfway through it. Like, why don't you just quit? Why don't you just not stand?
Right, right. Take a knee.
Next, we have consideration of the February 26th minutes. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the minutes from last week as presented.
I will second. Any comments or questions?
You have to second it, lady. There's nobody else there.
Yeah, right.
Hi. Craig Wright, Register of Claims, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, sent out the claims yesterday before noon and, uh, this, this was credit card week and, uh, besides that, uh, just normal claims. But we did have a few larger purchases, for instance, a purchase from Motor Vehicle Highway for 2023 Silverado. And, uh, that I will just.
Yeah, right.
Any questions you might have?
Linda, do you have any?
I have none this week.
I have none as well.
Of course.
They have none this week.
I move approval of the claims for $1,242,766.
I will second. Any comments, questions about the claims this week? Right, hearing none. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Thank you, Craig. We have no unfinished business this week, so moving into new business, we have the Department of Public Works plat for High Street Square.
How much was it? Was it?
1.24 million.
1.2, yeah.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, so what you'll.
There you go. Thank you.
Signature is basically a dedication of a public utility and access and ingress easement, uh, over here at High Street Square, immediately across the street. I think that's 301 North High Street. It's fairly straightforward. It's currently owned, what was formerly DAC, now Greater Muncie Economic Development Corporation, I think. They like changing their acronyms, but regardless, uh, basically it'll be for a parking lot and stormwater and sewer improvements between the park that is currently being constructed and what'll eventually be redeveloped into whatever it ends up being redeveloped into.
Yeah, they're not building that.
And all there is on that one.
Riverfront anymore, so.
I have no questions now. I move approval of the replating as presented.
I will second. Any comments or questions? Right, hearing none. All those for approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you so much. The next order of new business is a contract for Prairie Creek Trail placeholder.
Yes.
Hey.
Uh, this was.
Yeah, Paula, we do, uh, hold on.
Parks Board, but, uh, in the interest of just moving things forward, I kinda went ahead and put it on here so legal would review it. Um, legal's reviewing it. It'll go to the Parks Board. It'll come back here, but Prairie Creek got a grant for construction of a trail, um, there south of the campground. Pretty straightforward. I don't think the city's got a ton of money in it, but I'm just kinda, I'm a pass-through in a T on this one. So, uh, once they get all the particulars firmed up with legal and the Parks Board, it'll come back here and it'll do the whole thing.
So, under advisement for today?
Yeah, or you can just table it.
Okay, right. We'll table that then. All right. Any, do you have any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
You're like a damn bubblehead.
The end of order for new business.
Yeah.
Is there anything else to come before the board today? All right, hearing none. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.
Woo, look, I mean, that was five, five minutes and nine seconds. Now, keep in mind, there's, there's, uh, thirty seconds on each end, so it's, it's not really five minutes, actually.
Okay.
Um, so, okay, so, uh, I wanted to go through that really briefly because, uh, give me one second here. I'm looking. I wanna, I wanna get this, uh, I wanna be able to explain to, uh, them. Give me one second here. I'm trying to pull this up. So, um, the owner of Southway Plaza is Top Star Realty Group. That's the owner. That's the people who've owned it from the, from day one. And what was going to happen there, the big plan that Ridenhour had was a company called Brick Red, uh, something, services or some nonsense, uh, which was a little like, uh, I don't wanna say Middle Eastern, but like, uh, maybe like, uh, kind of like Indian or Pakistani or some, some, that kind of, uh, whatever that is, culture, that, that kind of person that lived in Washington or California in like a, uh, self-service, self-storage shed. Um, got like $3 million from the city of Muncie to, to do it. And we, we, for, for the last three years, we've been waiting on them to put in a heating and cooling system. And then finally, they just said, okay, well, something came up here. I guess the guy couldn't get, uh.
Brandon.
Hey, Brandon Rudd, look, now, hey, the team's back together.
Hell, hell.
We were just talking about Brandon. Uh, so, yeah, that's, that's that. Uh, I wanted to get that to Paula. Uh, okay, now, reference those claims, and this was something that I definitely wanted, and Brandon was right, by the way. Uh, reference the claims. Uh, I wanted to make sure because if you remember last meeting, um, Dustin Clark did not, did not draw a paycheck last meeting, so that was good. But, uh, we wanted to run down through here and see if we received anything this go-around. Give me one second here. Almost down to it. E, F, G, H. Oh, oh, no, it tricked me. It said Hoosier Fire Equipment, but not Hoosier Municipal. So, for the second weekend row, Hoosier Municipal Operations, or whatever their nonsense name, whatever that name is, it did not turn in a claim to the Board of Works. However, they are getting ready to, and this, um, I wanted, I wanna do one more check here real quick and see if they had, uh, a credit card, uh, to see if they, if they had a, a credit card, uh, or Dustin, because Craig did tell us that this was a credit card week, and I wanna look here and see if. I think that's through Star Bank. Okay, here we go. Car, Star Card Member Services. We're close.
C-L-A-R.
Yeah. I'm gonna have to go through these later date because that, that doesn't really, here's the, the thing is, I'm trying to find out if Dustin Clark as a contract employee still has a, a, uh, credit card. Because there is no reason in the world as a, as a contract employee, why Dustin should have a credit card. That would be just absolutely astronomically stupid, uh, if that, if that would be the case, because that's, that, I mean, it's just, it's nuts if that would be the case. But I'm gonna have to go through this with a fine-tooth comb. I'll do this when I'm off air and I'll, I'll be able to tell you guys tomorrow, uh, if that's the case. But no, I, I'm not seeing anything just right here, uh, quickly looking at it. But, um, okay, I wanna get into the breaking news, and I did talk about this a little bit the other day.
Okay.
Um, I have a hard time agreeing with the council on their opposition's SB1 when Dan wastes money like it's going out of style. If we can just cut favors to Dan's buddies, they could cut the budget. Yeah, 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 yeah. Absol- absolutely, absolutely. And, and so that's. That's a little bit of what I wanna talk about here. So, just a few moments ago, like literally as we were going live, I put a post on, um, I'm, uh, put a post on, uh, Facebook and the post says, uh, Muncie Mayor Dan Ridenhour, and for anyone wanting to know, uh, Muncie Mayor Dan Ridenhour will give the State of the City address tomorrow, Thursday, March 5th. No, that's not right. March 6th. I need to fix that. Uh, Thursday, March 6th at, uh, 7:00 AM, starting at 7:00 AM. It just absolutely kills me. Uh, how do you say that you do not want the regular human beings from your city to be there, uh, by, you know, else, other than having this at seven o'clock in the morning? Just absolutely nuts. Um.
Seven o'clock on a Thursday morning?
Yeah.
Most people's going to work at that time.
Yeah, right. I mean, it's just, just absolutely nuts. Just absolutely nuts. Anyways, so, uh, Ridenhour will give the State of the City address tomorrow at 7:00 AM on Thursday, March 6th, 2025. The State of the City address will be where the mayor, where Mayor Ridenhour tells those in attendance and those listening via stream or radio where he feels Muncie is as of Thursday, March 5th, 20, March 6th, 2025. He will discuss where he feels that we've come from in the last year and what his plans are for the next year. Okay? Remember when you and I went to the first one? Remember that? They had it on a Saturday and it was like in the middle of the day?
Yep.
When a lot of people could be, you know, it's just really strange that they're, they're doing this like this anyways.
What are they doing? Having it at City Hall?
No, they're having it at Horizon Convention Center.
At seven o'clock in the morning?
Seven o'clock in the morning. Um, and we'll find out what his plans are, uh, for the next year. Uh.
He don't think you can get up that early.
Yeah, right. What he doesn't understand is I'll just stay away. I'll just stay awake.
Up all night?
I'll be there. I got, I know. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna livestream the event and, uh, you'll be able to watch it here. Um, however, I'm stuck by an extremely odd detail that I have been hearing from a couple of extremely unlikely sources. These individuals do not work at City Hall, but they are connected to local government and people within local government. And listen, I'm just gonna flat out say, uh, and, and Dustin will not understand this, but the sources that I've heard this from, specifically that these two people that I've heard this from, I would consider them friends of Dustin. I would consider them to be probably friends of Dustin, uh, definitely see each other, uh, in social situations. So, that's just FYI. But they still have question about this, and the question is, what they've told me and what I find to be extremely strange is that Mayor Ridenhour has his contract employee Dustin Clark and by extension Dustin Clark's girlfriend, who was the former communications director for the city of Muncie, Michelle Owen, preparing the State of the City, the speech along with the PowerPoint presentations. Why is this? Michelle's not working.
Money.
You're right. Well, that's, that's how he gets paid. That's, he, he's a contract employee. He's been, I think you, I don't know if you followed this in the last couple of weeks. He's making like $10,000 a, a paycheck. Weekly. He, one, one week.
We discussed this a couple of months ago. Why would the mayor make $76,000? Why would he pay somebody a hundred or, what was it, 300,000?
Yeah.
A year when he's making 75?
Dude, it's, it's asinine. It's so crazy that that is something that goes on and, and just the, the, I, I have a lot to catch you up on. The, the, the way that they did, uh, the way that they did the, um, contract for this, it's just, it's nuts what they've done. So, this space, state, this State of the City, it is a speech where the mayor is gonna be talking about all of these wonderful things that he, uh, and his administration have completed. I guess, I don't know how many there are.
Not very many.
He doesn't complete many things over the last year, and he's gonna talk about how he's put a lot of things on the tax rolls and we have a lot of new developments and yada, yada, yada. Okay? But then we've got this thing going on down at the State House. He, a Republican, is fighting hard against his, his governor. We've got the county council who have issued a resolution against the governor. We have the city council, a city council Republican, Rose Selvi, who wanted to applaud the county council's effort and who went as far Monday night saying, "We need to do something like this. Hopefully, we'll do something like this." So, that's just letting you guys know where they're coming from. And at the same time, they're saying like, "We don't know where we're gonna get the money from. We don't know where we're gonna get the money from." But we've got Dan paying Dustin Clark, you know, $10,000 a paycheck, $8,000 a check every couple of weeks to do god knows what. He still has not completed his record request. I still do not have all of the, um, the grants that he's ever applied for or received or, or whatever. So, you know, no, no one knows what's going on there, and this is what we have going. They made a deal with the police and the fire to give them, what was the percentages of the raise?
Five percent.
Five percent this year and how much next year?
Ten percent.
Okay, and now, on top of that, I do have, and I, I wanted, I specifically wanted to have you on because I have, um, as I have talked about on here, we had that email from Nora. Well, I actually have the back and forth. I have the emails that Nora had originally sent, uh, to Dan, okay? And so, I want, I want you, you guys to be able to hear this and see this. So, I'm gonna share this and we'll put this up on the screen so you guys can see this. Okay? So, this was the original message, all right, uh, from Dan Ridenhour, sent on Wednesday, February 26th to, uh, Nora, Craig Wright, and Matt Wiggly. And then he, uh, he also then carbon copied, apparently.
Jerry Dishman?
Uh, maybe all of the rest of the city council. I don't know if this is everybody, but then he also does just Jerry Dishman. Oh, yeah. It's because Jerry doesn't get the regular city council emails for whatever reason, along with the fire chief and the deputy police chief. Okay, net cost of CBAs. Nora. We estimate that to, see, I still, well, we'll have to see. We estimate that 223,973 will be needed to cover the fire union employees for a three percent raise. If it occurred in 2026, just an FYI. If a 10% raise, it would be 729,000. If a 10% raise, it would be 729,903 dollars for the raise. Okay? As for how it would be paid in 2026, property tax revenues in 2020 were 14.631 million. In 2024, they had grown to 18.383 million. The growth is partly due to the additional properties and developments that we have put in place and that are now on the tax rolls since I began as mayor. We in partly, what what's the other part there, Dan? I'd be interested in what he thinks that is. We anticipate additional revenues in 2025 and 2026. Since we know of several projects that are currently under construction, these properties will soon be assessed and added to the tax rolls as well. Income tax in 2020, we were 4.249 million. In 2024, those revenues had grown to 5.819 million. We anticipate growing income tax revenues as our average income continues to increase. We have worked diligently since 2020 on improving parks, YMCA, amenities, housing, which can help provide reasons for new people to find our city attractive and move here.
Other than the roads.
Uh, David, um, yeah, I, you know, look, I understand maybe trying to get somebody up if from where they are, but they have pretty substantial. Look, I understand that the police and the fire are saying that we are woefully underpaid, but they are always going to say they're woefully underpaid. That's what.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute, Chris.
Yeah.
Uh, how do I? How do I say this? They fought five years ago for a Firebase CMS.
Yeah.
Now they're complaining because they're doing 7,000 runs since the first of the year.
Yeah.
You can't have it both ways. You got all that fucking money coming in from Firebase CMS. Now you wanna bitch and say, oh, we're doing 7,000 runs a year now or 7,000 runs already this year?
Yeah.
And and you added Firebase CMS. Take Firebase CMS, get it back to Delaware County if you don't want it, want the runs.
Well, you know, I mean, you gotta look at all the money that that brings into the city and how wonderful they think that is and all the stuff they use that for.
Yes, but they're complaining and say, oh, we got a lot more runs than Newcastle. We got a lot more than this company and that company, but you know why?
Bigger than New. There's 17,000 people in Newcastle.
Right. But those people over there make more money than the firemen and policemen here do supposedly. So. All right, go ahead with your.
No, yeah, that's fine. No, you're fine. No, no, no. Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, it's a good point.
More on it in the.
Yeah, yeah, no, you're fine. Yeah. Make My Move, for example, which recruits remote workers to move to Muncie has been quite successful. This program has seen 188 people move to Muncie since we began the program a few short years ago. That's interesting. I have never seen or heard this from anybody. Why do they not? If this is in fact true, like, great, you're telling us now and and he's not even telling us. We know this because we get an email from the mayor. Now, I'm sure the mayor's gonna hit upon this tomorrow, but why don't real citizens know this? Like, I know this because I've followed him here here along with it, but we're, you know, he's saying this in in an in an email and they they need to be putting this stuff out there if that's in fact happening. The incomes of these movers have helped increase the average income and therefore the tax collection amounts. These two income sources alone, property and income, will sufficiently cover the 3% raise in 2026 if it occurs. Okay?
Now, what he's talking about, they got a 3% on 2026 if property taxes, if property tax reform is
Doesn't happen.
Through. Yeah.
If it 3%, if it doesn't happen, right?
3% if the property tax reform.
Does happen. Okay, yes, that's right. If it doesn't happen, it'd be 10%.
Correct.
And that's the reason every that and I I heard the I heard Jason Chaffin say, whoa, we've got all of our lobbyists down there fighting that, you know, fighting against this, fighting against this, which, by the way, they had a session today. Um, and we'll we'll talk about that here in a moment. Okay, so that that email there was a response that Dan had sent to Nora. Nora had originally sent Dan an email on Tuesday, February 5th saying, thank you for that clarification. Uh, however, please provide the net totals for 2026 since it includes the contracts that we'll be voting on. And as you said, uh, 1348 will receive a 3% raise in 2026 regardless. Where will the funding for the next year come from? Okay, and then that takes us down to uh this is the email that I had from him originally. Uh, so let me go down here to the bottom and see. We'll start. So we can start in real time. I hate how they send these emails out.
Out.
Mm hmm. Okay, so on Sunday, January 12th, Nora sent the first email to Dan. It was reported at January city council meeting that negotiations for both local 1348, which is the fire department and the FOP have concluded and that CBAs will be coming before the council for adoption. Please, a collective bargaining. Okay, please provide counsel for the net cost to the city for each collective bargaining agreement. Can we expect AFSMI's collective bargaining agreement to come before the council for adoption at the same meeting? Okay, so that was the first question to which uh apparently she never got a response from. Okay, because then she wrote back on uh, let's see, when did the first thing get sent? So she she sent that on January 12th and then on February 21st, she wrote and said, Mayor Ridenhour, just following up, now that both FOP and 1348's contracts have been finalized, please provide counsel with the net cost to the city for the FOP contract and 1348 contract. Can you give a brief update as to the progress of AFSMI's negotiations? Thank you. To which Ridenhour says the following. On February 24th, council members, here's how we're paying for the salary increase for the police and fire bargaining units. Police. Uh, okay, let's see here. Uh, 374,336 fires, 326,689. Uh, then they have minus six uh two, 26336 and 26336 opioid unrestricted funds. See ordinance 725 on the agenda. Okay, and then they have uh an additional uh 1,001, 1,000, 111,300 and uh 63 uh 653 and he says that's savings from the city council cutting those three positions, the deputy mayor, deputy controller and the communications director. Okay, net zero, net zero. We still have uh 3,320 left from the salaries cuts. Thank you all for your efforts. Okay, so that's interesting.
Mm hmm.
Uh, February 24th, mayor, thank you for your response. Are those the total costs of the contracts for two years? For one year, do the totals provided include the cost on the salaries? Or do they include the the cost of the negotiated items such as increased holiday pay, clothing changes? If these totals are for only one year, what will the total be for next year and will you pay those costs from the opioid settlement funds too? Thank you, Nora Powell. To which Dan then responds with the email that we have all seen. The cost we shared is for one year. So only one year. These amounts are not just the salaries but include other costs as well. So that's good to know.
Mm hmm.
We didn't prepare any 2026 numbers. The police agreement only includes the second year if there is a lit increase.
Whoa.
Yep. If lit is not approved, this agreement only covers a one year for salaries. The city had a 1.3 million increase in property tax revenue from 2023 to 2024 due to the now new developments being taxable. We expect a smaller increase for 2026 for sure, but have the 3% increase for fire in 2026 covered if lit is not approved. If lit is approved, both police and fire will have the funding to move forward with the agreements. And those agreements mean a 10% raise for both in 2026.
Correct.
Okay, and then that's when we get Nora saying, thank you for clarification. However, please provide the net totals for 2026 since it's included in the contract. See, that's what I don't understand. To me, they almost, to me, it seems like they've negotiated kind of in bad faith. Because, I mean, and they didn't because they told them upfront what they were doing, but they negotiated something for 2026 that they don't know they can provide.
Right.
Because they don't know what's gonna happen with lit and they don't know what's gonna happen with SB one. So, you know, to me, all they've done is they've went into a one-year contract negotiation and I'm willing to bet that they are going to have to go back and renegotiate next year.
I would say so too, because if nah, because lit tax will pass, they're gonna pass.
Bad faith with the citizens. Absolutely.
Absolutely. Spending money they don't have yet.
Spending money. Yeah, right, right. That's that's right. And you're right. They won't have to. They they won't have to because lit is going to pass. Let's put it in your contract when we don't know if we can pay it. Yeah, tell me how nonsensical that is, Ryan. That's so stupid. Then how are they so much more rich then? If the state is uh balancing, why can't they fund it with lower output? I think that's going on up there. I don't know if I haven't been reading everything you said, but okay. Uh, so that then takes us to Nora's uh or or Dan's email that we've read first off when he's talking about, you know, what they've done and patting himself on the back. So again, the bottom line, they've done all of this without knowing what's going to happen next year. Dan does not know what's gonna happen with Senate Bill One. However, hard all of the local governments are working to kill it. I have heard.
Amazing. Isn't it amazing that the uh Democrats always wanted big spending and the Republicans always wanted tax cuts and now they're all wanting to don't tax cut, don't give these people property tax breaks. We need the money. We wanna waste it on stupid shit.
What is going on? We have flipped it. Something has flipped here.
It's 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 because years ago, we had a company called 214 that wouldn't let these people run because they were Democrats and now that they think they're Republicans, they're running as Republicans. They think that, well, hell, we get in office, we'll just be Democrats and just spend it all.
But having the contract puts a lot of pressure on the council to increase the lit. Look, we already have a contract. Do you want PD and and oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And understand that that will be going into you know, we'll, you know, next year and the year after, hell, we'll we'll be at midterm midway through for the council, so they'll only be two years away from election at that point. And so, yeah, it's that's a that is a very powerful tool. You do not want FOP and the 1348 mad at you because if so, whoa, you're not going to get reelected.
You're not gonna get the $500 they bought you off with.
You're not gonna. Yeah, right. You're not gonna get to $500 they give you, you know? Like, I ain't telling them what they can do with that $500. Um, Ryan says damn near every single elected official in both Muncie and Delaware County can't wait to raise everyone's taxes.
The Republicans.
It blows my mind. Yeah, it's the Republicans, man.
The Republicans are in charge in the county. All they need is one council member from the city to raise the lit tax. If if all the Republicans on the council vote to raise the the city, the county council vote to raise the lit tax, all they need is one person on the city council to raise the lit tax.
Ryan, with next year being with next year being district raises, do you think that the county will raise the lit? Do you think? I mean, I I think they will. I don't see any. I mean, I think that I think they're, I think they're going to pull that. They're gonna pull it and hope that people forget by next year.
They're gonna, they're gonna force the uh city council, like I told the city council the other night at the meeting. They're gonna force the city council to do and there's six Democrats on there. So the uh, the Democrats will be the ones that, oh, the Democrats is the ones who raised your lit tax. You know, and there was a lot of misleading information given by uh Chaffin ass up there.
Why? So so, all right, so we'll get into getting into the meeting.
We'll get into that when it when it comes.
Well, I mean, well, I mean, we we, yeah, we can, we can go in and go ahead and get into that. What 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 are your thought? I mean, what's your thoughts on all of that?
Well, I think he said something about it's only it's only a 25% or a 50% increase. Well, here's the thing. I looked it up the other day. Our lit tax is $1.50. Is 1.5%, okay? Dollar 50 per hundred. And uh, it can only go up to, I think, 2.5%. So you know, they're gonna want to max it out and every county around us has already done it.
Yeah, 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 that's, yeah, they.
Well, every county around us has done it to improve the roadways, drive on the roads. The roads are a hell of a lot better than they are here in Muncie.
Right, right?
You can always tell when you come into Delaware County. The roads go to shit real quick.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I that is very true. Absolutely true. Let me pull this up here.
We're we're well under what Fishers does or Noblesville or 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 even uh Westfield. Go down there and look at the growth going on down there.
Yeah.
They're building these sports complexes and sports arenas for for Indiana Pacers, third team down there in Noblesville on on 69, right there off the Noblesville exit. They just opened that new uh uh Sports Center in Fishers. Just look at it. The growth down there is so much phenomenal compared to the growth in Muncie. We're getting fucking little shacks to bring people in to live in. They can't afford them.
Yeah.
$1,200 a month, $1,600 a month. Then they'll turn around, put them on section eight, the federal government will pay for them. So we're still paying for them again as taxpayers.
Well.
And that's all we can build in this town is apartments. That's the only thing we're building that's getting finished is apartments.
Right. I don't understand what they're what they're doing with that. That is so strange. Everywhere we go, it's apartments, 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 apartments. And I mean, you know, I don't understand where are the people coming that are going to come that are gonna live there?
Well, they've got the people for them. That's the reason you're seeing empty houses and stuff. You know, there's there's still a a big uh push for housing. People can't afford to live in the houses is the reason. So they're trying to get in these programs that uh that uh, you know, just like that apartment complex at the old Marsh at the end of 12th Street. That's all. That's all income based. So going there and smell the, going the hallways there, that's all locked community, but as soon as you open the door, the smell marijuana just knocks you down. I mean, you get contact buzz and that's all federal housing. They can afford to smoke their weed, but they can't afford to pay the rent.
That's crazy.
It is. I smoke my cigarettes, but I got a job. I pay about 30, I pay about $30,000 a year in taxes.
Nothing wrong with marijuana.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
If you can afford to smoke it.
Right, right, right.
But don't let me be paying your rent and you going out and buying marijuana. I don't agree with that.
Um, okay, let's pull this part of up of the Muncie City Council and let's let's listen to this for a second here.
For the year 2025.
So moved. Second.
Yeah, motion's been made in second.
Find out which one this is.
Yes.
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 Okay, vote carries.
Mr. President, I would like to ask uh my fellow councilmen to suspend the rules in order Mr. President, I would like to ask my fellow councilmen to suspend the rules in order to adopt this ordinance tonight.
I'll second it. That's for the housing.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we approve this ordinance.
I second.
Yeah, motion's been made and seconded, do we adopt this motion? Roll call.
All right, here we go.
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 11 dash 25.
Yeah, here it is.
An ordinance fixing the maximum salaries of each and every member of the Muncie Police Department of the city of Muncie, Indiana for the year 2025.
And Chris, before we ever start on this, I want people to know. I wish them people could, like I said in the meeting, get a hundred percent raise, a thousand percent raise. But we can only give raises on what we can afford.
Yeah, right, 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 right. And like, you know, Ryan's talked about that before for the county, you know, you want the people working for you to be paid well and, and to have a good, you know, have a good career and a good salary and, and, and we wish that Muncie and Delaware County was funded in a way that we could pay them above what they want and more, you know? But you have to, you know, you.
Yeah, legalize marijuana. Axe the hell out of them, like to do my cigarettes, my cigarettes are $10 a pack.
That's insane.
It's nine dollars of its, uh, taxes.
Yeah. That's really crazy. Our government is paying for workers' housing, how insane is that? To me, it's a, it's insane. In fact, letting each county implement and set their own additional county sales tax and legalize both recreational and medical marijuana. That's how we offset property taxes being concealed. Yeah.
That's true.
I think that's interesting, I think that would definitely be interesting.
You could do it with, well, look at Colorado.
Yeah.
They've done with all their taxes.
Yeah.
Marijuana funds it.
All right, here we go.
Yeah, motion's been made and seconded, that this ordinance be adopted. Introduced. Introduced. Discussion, any discussion on it?
Good evening, Matt Wagley, Deputy Controller.
Greg Wright, Controller, this is an ordinance that is fixing the salary ordinance for the Muncie Police Department for 2025. And this goes along, obviously, with the adoption that you're going to see in a resolution towards the end of the meeting, so of the, the contract.
Yes.
And deputy chief's compensation just changed along with officers.
Mr. President, I've got a question.
Yes.
Um, actually, our legal counsel caught this, that it says that the increases take effect January 5th, 2024. Was that a typo in that?
I would say it would be, be January 1st, 2025.
We need to amend that then?
Yeah, second three. Thank you.
Good catch.
Yeah.
Hi, I'll sneak in here, Chris Dagan, Muncie Police Department. I heard somebody had a question about salaries and what it was, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Hey, well, did, did they increase, did they change, that was the question.
So this results in an increase from the deputy chief, the chief compensation, changed from a stated annual salary to a stated biweekly pay.
So what we did was traditionally years past, we've had annual salaries for everybody across the board. We made the decision to switch to biweekly salaries as what the, I think the civilians, all the salary ordinances are biweekly. We're trying to fall in line with that. We also have, I think, 2027 is going to be a year where we're going to have 27 pays and not 26 pays. So we're just trying to get ahead of that. So all we did was the contract that was negotiated was for 5%. So every annual salary that we have from the previous ordinance, we calculated the 5%. We brought that down into biweekly salary and that's what you see in front of you.
Any questions for council?
Yeah, question, uh, Mr.
Yeah.
Just for the public record, it says that the chief and deputy chief compensations were both increased from ordinance. Could you tell the public by how much?
5%.
5% even for them, okay.
Same as the, same as the, the rest of the department.
Okay, Mr. President.
Yes.
So does this include, this 5%, is that all compensation, including benefits, any gear, that kind of thing?
So that's more of a contract question, this is just dealing with the salaries. All of the benefits that are carved out for insurance, retirement, that's all part of the contract.
Okay.
This is just the salaries.
Okay. And so, Mr. Wright, this, um, these increases will be financed through the opioid settlement money?
Yes.
Okay, Chris, it's, it's all going through the opioid settlement money. They got 1.4 million dollars in that account, okay? Earlier in the meeting, though, they approved 500 some thousand dollars for, um, something for the fire department. Was it fire truck or something, something?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what.
And that was out of opioid money, so that takes us down to 900,000. So the raises for, for, um, the police and fire at 5% were what? Do you remember them numbers? I just want to make sure we're not going over the 1.4 million.
I don't think it is, but.
At the 5% was, uh, 10% would have been 75, so 320.
I've got it right.
What was it, 353 and then 300?
So. Right, here we go. Uh, so Ryan Hour says, uh, it will be, we estimate that FYI, a 3% raise, is, is that what we're talking about, we estimate?
Yeah, but we need to go back to the 2025 raise. The 2025 is a 5% raise.
Okay.
So that's the one I was concerned about.
Uh, that I, I don't know.
Yeah, you had it on there, uh, one of the emails.
Yes.
When I broke it down for Nora. We estimate that 229, that's 10%. So half of 730 is 336, 360,000. Okay. 2020, keep going, keep going. Remember when she asked what the 20, that's, that's just discussing the 3% raise. But there was one in there that said that they was getting a 5% raise and that the city had 1.3 increase in property.
Oh, no, okay, that'll be this.
Right there, fires getting 300, is that the, go back up just a little bit.
Yeah.
Go back up just a little bit, is that the 5%?
Um.
So you got 373,000.
Yeah.
That leaves three, what'd they say, leaves 3,000, how much?
This is from salaries cut, this is not the opioid.
Okay.
This is from the, this is from that, the opioid, the money that they're taking from the opioid.
So you got 700, you got, uh, four, you got about 700,000, so that leaves them about 200,000 in the opioid money.
And, but they don't, they, they said they get that every year for 18 years.
It, it varies every year.
But like Kate said, the opioid money I thought was supposed to help with the opioid crisis. Or is it like edit, if you can justify it, it helps with roundabout.
They can use it on whatever they want.
That's, that's what it is, right? And there's been a lot of people that have talked about the fact that, you know, this needs to be going for opioid treatment. And they're justifying and saying, well, these people work with the people in the streets that are, you know, and it's like, that starts to get edit wise.
Listen, though. That 1.4 million has been collected over the last four years.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not 1.4 million a year.
Yeah, right, 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 I understand.
People's got to realize that, and then once that 1.4 million that's in that account for the opioids is gone. That's why they're trying to figure out how to pay the 3% and the 10% for the lit tax, because they're gonna have to raise lit tax to make up that money. Because that 1.4 million dollars is not every year, that's just over, that amount has been collected for four years, so.
Yeah.
You know?
How much money does Muncie get in its opioid settlement?
It varies from year to year. So you got 1.4 million, so you get about, what is that, about 30, 300,000 a year, maybe?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull up here.
350,000, take 350 times four, and that's, that'll tell you if that's close to 1.4.
Delaware County, Muncie.
Cause four times 400,000 is 101.6 million, so about 350,000 a year.
Okay, additional amounts to the county under Indian code. So there's, uh, political subdivision, total unrestricted share, total abatement share, unrestricted abatement share. I don't really understand, so Muncie, uh, it says.
They were talking unrestricted up there, so we need to go by what the unrestricted is.
Total unrestricted share.
But that's for the county and the city.
No, that's just for Muncie, because it breaks it down, Delaware County, Albany, Daleville, Eaton, Gaston, Muncie. And so what I read from Muncie was, now it's adjusted by the applicant, okay, let's see here. Look, look here. Put it on the screen. Look here. Distributed for Indiana counties, cities, towns. Okay, payments by year for state of Indiana.
So it's 15%.
Here's, here's Delaware. Here's Muncie.
Muncie gets, yeah. I don't know how it's dispersed.
Uh, yeah, I don't know exactly, I'll have to look into see what this is exactly, what how, how.
Dispersion.
It's yearly.
Go back, stop right there, let me see one of them, let's see what them yellow or brown things say right there.
It just says political subdivision total, it just says, it's the, it's what each line is. Total unrestricted share, total abatement share, total attorney's fees payment if applicable. Unrestricted share, abatement share, attorney's fees, additional amount to the county under Indiana code, dah 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 dah.
So, you know, even if it's 600,000 a year, that's still not enough to cover the 5% raise.
Well. So, and Ryan had said up there that he feels if, if they go with the lit, that they're going to max it.
Oh, they'll max it. I think the lit max is two and a half percent of it.
I don't know, if Ryan is still here, I, I don't, I don't know.
But, uh, but the fire.
Three.
Chafan said that they only needed 25 to 50% increase for, um.
And that's what you were, you, were you questioning that? You were saying you didn't know if that was true or not?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's all the unrestricted funds?
Yes.
Unrestricted is what they get.
Yes, on the, yeah, on the unrestricted for this year.
Is there a time limit where those funds have to, I'm sorry, Mr. President, may I?
Yes.
Sorry, is there a time limit when those funds have to be used from ARP, okay?
No, because they're, they're not ARP funds.
Oh, they're not?
No, it's a.
Oh, the settlement from the state, okay. Thank you.
Okay. They were done with me yet or not?
Oh, any other questions for?
Thank you, thank you.
Audi Barber, um, our opioid phones are all going to be run out. And I agree with everybody making as much money as they possibly can make, okay? I agree a hundred percent, pay them as much as we can afford. But I'm afraid if you guys adopt these raises and these contracts, they got a 10% raise last year. They're getting a 5% raise this year. And by all means, I wish they'd get a 50% raise, don't get me wrong. But if we don't have the money to pay our bills, that means we're going to raise taxes. And about a year and a half ago, I mentioned something about a lit tax. And guys, I'm not that very bright, but I can see that lit tax coming and it's coming quick. And some of you guys already know what I'm talking about. And they're going to force you guys as the council to adopt it. And then they're going to hold it over your heads and say, this one, this one, this one, this one, this one, this one, all six of you guys voted for this to give these raises when we don't have the money to give the raises. And then you're going to turn around and have to raise lit tax and you're going to say, well, there you go, there's the people that raised your lit tax. My lit tax runs me about $40 a week on my paycheck, okay? About like my sewage bill, my sewage bill went from $23 to $42. You're raising these taxes, these people can't afford them, they've got minimum wage jobs or 12 or $14 an hour jobs. Every time you raise taxes, it's $20 here, $20 there, and these folks are not going to be able to afford these tax raises. Let's live in our means. If you have a gas bill at your house or you, when I say you, I mean the whole council, and you can't afford to pay it, you quit spending until you get the money to pay that. And that's what's going on here, we have got to stop the spending. Or you're going to run the rest.
Bottom line is, no matter if, you know, you're, you're right or wrong on figures here or there, that's the bottom line. We have to live within our means.
That's exactly right.
You have to live within our means and, and, and not doing that's nuts. Absolutely insane.
And we're supposed to have a balanced budget.
Well, yeah, right. Yeah.
We have left in this town out because the taxes are going to be too high. And I don't understand, I don't understand it. I, I, I like the money on my paychecks and I like to be able to spend the money on what I want, but when they're taking it out of there faster, I can make it. And I make good money, I make really damn good money. So half these people make about a fourth of what I make and they can't afford it. They're not going to be able to afford it. So when you give these big raises, they'll love you guys for it, I understand, police and fire both. I wish they all could have 50% raises, but they can't do it with the tax, with the tax money we got coming in. And you guys are going to force the lit tax. And that's what's going to happen, you mark my words, I said it a year and a half ago, I'm saying it again today, here comes the lit tax, it's getting ready to come, folks, get ready.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Anybody else?
It's coming.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I may comment, yes, I may. Uh, the opioid settlement, the funds that are being used and delved out here. These individuals in emergency services are the very ones that deal with this on a day to day basis. The emergency services should receive this for what they're doing. I have no problem with allowing this to go through.
I don't know that I agree with that, I don't know that I agree with that, I don't, I don't agree with that.
From the state came in.
It's for the people that need the help.
Yeah.
It's because the people were addicted to the opioids.
Audi Barber, once again, when you do that, when you give them that money, that's fine. But do you think they're going to come back and ask for a 5% reduction? Once that money's gone and you guys don't have the money to pay that anymore? Do you think they're going to ask for a reduction or do you think you're going to have to come up with that money somewhere else? You've got to come up with that money because that opioid money is not going to last very long.
It's not the way they're spending it.
Mr. Barber, that opioid settlement money is not going to be used next year, from what I understand, uh, from an email from Mayor Ridenhour. But the opioid settlement money is an 18 year process, I think, I think that's what I read. So that's an 18 year process, so we will have more money to spend on other endeavors in regards to.
How much is the opioid money each, each year?
Uh, it differs every year, unrestricted and restricted abatement funds, it differs every year. And from what Mayor Ridenhour has said, we haven't spent any of that yet, so there's that. And in regards to what your, your comment on the lit, the first I've heard of that is an email earlier this week from Mayor Ridenhour. So it is in the beginning discussions from what I understand.
It is in the beginning discussions already.
I don't know, there's been no discussion as of yet, that's a conversation that you need to have with Mayor Ridenhour.
Well, like I said a year and a half ago, guys, get ready for it because it is coming, I promise you that.
Listen, it's been being talked about for quite some time.
Yeah.
Ridenhour started talking to, um, I, I know Jessica Piper, I don't know that I can say that it was Matt Kance, maybe Matt Kance was involved. But I know that Jessica Piper was involved and that was in the year.
Yes, they did.
That Ridenhour was running, it was the year that right, it was, so it was 2023. Ridenhour was talking to Jessica about the lit tax and Jessica was against it then. And Jessica was against it then because she knew it was towards the end. It was like maybe September twenty twenty-three. And she knew that she would be running for reelection in twenty twenty-four. So that wasn't going to be a thing they were going to touch then, but they could easily do it now. And everybody would forget this time, you know, next year.
And here's the thing, most of these people on this council have no idea what we're even talking about.
Yeah, that's what's, that's what's really crazy. That's what's really crazy because I, I agree with.
It's a rent tax, local income tax, folks. Read your paychecks. It's on there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One point five percent is what it runs you. And then you're going to hear Nora say here in a few minutes, well, that's only a bottle of pop. Well, some people can't even afford a bottle of pop.
All right, let's go on here. I didn't hear she, I didn't know she said that. That's crazy.
Yeah.
You know, in favor of introducing. This ordinance signified by saying aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries. Ordinance number twelve dash twenty-five.
Ordinance twelve dash twenty-five and ordinance fixing the maximum salaries of each and every member of the Muncie Fire Department of the City of Muncie, Indiana for the year twenty twenty-five.
And this is the same thing.
Second.
Yeah, motion's been made and seconded. That this ordinance be introduced. All in favor of signifying, any discussion?
It gets figured out one of these days.
Yeah, this is, uh, basically the, uh, same, uh, fixing the salaries for, uh, twenty twenty-five for the fire department as we did with the police department for the.
Same thing.
Contract year for this year. It's the same percentage with the fire as the police.
I don't know why Wagley's got standing up there with him.
Uh, yeah, oh, it's so weird.
Why ain't the deputy, uh, deputy chief standing up there with the fire?
I do have one.
Right.
What is the total amount of the opioid settlement?
That's a question for Mayor Ridenhour or for Controller.
I don't have the number.
Well, as. As of now in that fund, the, uh, unrestricted is five twenty-six, oh seventy-two, seventy-seven. And there's a total of one million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Three years.
Yeah, that includes the restricted.
Right. So that's what I was going to say. The restricted is the one point, what, one point, one, something, one point three.
One point one three eight.
Yeah, okay. So that's different.
One. Oh, so there ain't going to be that much in there afterwards.
No. That's what we have right now.
Minus the five hundred. That ain't even enough to cover it all. At least seven hundred something. Yeah, it's enough to cover it.
Well, yeah.
And my question for Mayor Ridenhour, in December, when we talked to Mayor Ridenhour at our council admin conversation, we talked about a different use for the opioid settlement monies that it was originally earmarked for a community center in Heaton Park. And then would be shifted.
Interesting. So this opioid money was originally going to be used. Now listen to this. This opioid money that they're talking about was originally going to be used for a youth center. In one of the parks, which to me. Yeah, Heaton Park, which sounds like something more along the lines that I would have thought that this money would have been used for. Doing something like that.
The community center that they've been promising that park for twenty years now.
Yeah, twenty years, which, which Wayne Skaif gets up and talks about. Okay.
Twenty-five years.
And so, yeah, 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 yeah. So I thought, I was like, yeah, that kind of sounds like something that they would, you know, that makes sense to me. All right. So let's listen here.
For this use, I just want to make sure that there is funding for that community center in Heaton Park. So that that's not, so that we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul. So maybe that's a question for you, Mayor Ridenhour.
I don't know. This, these people, these people just. Keep jumping money from here to there and taking it away.
We decided that it was important to have.
All that stuff.
Safety.
Oh, hold on.
That we, and there is still plenty of funds primarily through.
This use, I just want to make sure.
It's really important.
For that community center in Heaton Park. So that that's not, so that we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul. So maybe that's a question for you, Mayor Ridenhour.
Dan looked bad.
Yeah, always.
Yeah, we decided that it was important to have our public safety, uh, get the increases.
Agreed.
That we, and there is still plenty of funds primarily through Edit, uh, that we believe will be available for that.
Okay, so he believed. He believed that it was more important to shore up the vote with the police and fire. Get them locked in. And we believe there's still enough to pay through Edit. Well, listen, if he would quit throwing. Thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars at Dustin. And it might have money, and it might have money for that.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Right, right. I just, I was shocked. I was shocked. They said, yeah, look at, look at Ridenhour here. He does not look good.
Yes, you're saying there's plenty of funds for the youth center. Is that what you're saying?
The, the, what we're putting in, yes, those funds are available through Edit.
So it's ongoing. It's still going to be happening, right?
Well, we're still working on it. Absolutely. Absolutely.
We're working on it. We've only been working on it twenty-five years.
Yeah, keep in mind, I, I, I want, uh, I want everyone to remember when, when they're working on, we've been working, you know, it took them four years to start working on Till Pond. So when Ridenhour says we're working on it, that's a very, you know, that.
Shady answer.
Terrible term. Yeah, shady answer. Absolutely.
Barber.
Audi Barber again, once I, like I said. Guys, I, you, you just spent five hundred and some thousand dollars out of this one point four million dollars, didn't you? Isn't that what you voted on? The fire department stuff out of the opioid money?
No, sir, no.
Yes, you did.
We introduced.
Oh, it was introduced. So you got five hundred thousand that was introduced.
I hate when they say that. No, uh, uh, we didn't, we just introduce. You voted. To introduce it. You voted to introduce it. When we come back next month. You're going to vote nine all to pass it.
Yep.
You have to vote to introduce it. In order to vote to pass it. If you didn't vote on it, that's such a stupid ass bullshit answer that Sarah Gollion, uh, or Nora or whoever else says that nonsense. Every, like they're acting like nobody understands how it works. Yes, you didn't just pass it, but you voted on it.
You set the money aside to, to, to pay for it.
Yeah, right. That's where it's going. Like I, that's nonsense.
Uh, another. Whatever introduced for the police and fire. Um, sorry. Raise. Guess what? ASME still does not have their contract as of today. That is a problem.
And.
I'm going to ask you guys to table this.
Audi, you turned out, thank God, to be wrong. And they just made the, I mean, I, who, who now?
It's not, still not their contract yet. They still don't have it until the council passes it.
Yeah, you're, you're right. Cause you, you know what's funny is they, they did talk about signing this and that and this and that, but their contract wasn't put on this agenda.
Right.
Why was their contract not on this agenda?
And as of that meeting, they didn't have a contract.
Yep, you're right. You're right.
Show strength in numbers. Show strength for your. Ask me, guys. That did not lay down on the job when the snow came in. They give you the snow. They cleared the snow. They didn't lay down. They don't have a contract. They're going to get a three percent raise, possibly a two percent raise because they were asked to give up the. They were asked to give up the, uh, Me Too clause. So they have had to give the Me Too clause up. To get a three percent raise in a contract. So, or a two percent raise in a contract. So please table this until they get a contract. And they don't have a contract.
Oh, we can't do that.
I don't know if you're putting the cart before the horse or not, but you're giving these raises on these contracts that you guys haven't even voted on yet. So I don't know. I don't know the order of that, how that works. If you should do the contracts first and then give the raises because I think you put the cart before the horse. I don't know for sure.
It all should be together.
Clarify that. These ordinances right now to change the salary are for introduction. They won't be adopted until next month. Both agreements.
And I want to say, I understand why they're saying you're wrong, but I understand what you're saying. It, and I, I was like thinking like call a lifeline, assist a friend. Cause like I wanted to help you. Cause like you kept saying like, does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm saying? And I'm like, you're, you, I got what you were saying. If you vote on the one. You're putting yourself in a position where. You've got to vote on the other. If you approve the contract. Be, you, 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 okay, so you vote on the salary ordinance before you approve the contract. That's stupid. If you pay the, if you vote on the contract, they should have them together.
Yes.
And, you know, I don't, like, I don't understand, maybe.
One's a resolution, one's a resolution and one's a, uh, ordinance.
Yeah, but you know what they could do is they could put these little asterisks there and they could do them together.
Yes.
They're in control of the agenda.
Yes.
It's not that. Difficult.
Right.
You know, I don't. I don't really understand that, but I got what you were saying.
They're giving, they're giving them raises for the contracts over.
Yeah.
And, and the council is well, well aware of this, as is ASME. They approved this. Uh, it did go to their membership and the membership voted for it. And we were told today that, that we should have the signed document from ASME for their agreement, uh, tomorrow.
So they didn't have a contract still. It wasn't signed yet.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, I get so, I, I tell them to stop that every time.
So after getting the raise last year, the money that was set aside for this community center that I've been advocating for, for years. Now it's going to be done away with and you guys are all right with that. Cause y'all know if it gets put on the back burner again. It ain't ever going to happen. So now y'all is going to use this money. And now it's in, okay, we're going to put on the back burner again, do this with it. So. The center is not going to happen. It's not true. Been going on since Mick Shirley administration. So, I mean, the money was, is there.
He just said.
Mayor just said he was going to continue.
Yes, with Edit dollars, sir.
Come on.
I'm just saying, man, you, you can only answer what you heard us say.
So why not use, keep that money for the center and use that Edit money for this right here? Let's do that.
You'll have to answer that.
That would be a question for me.
Y'all the one vote on it. Y'all the one decided.
Yeah.
So just use that Edit money for that and keep that, keep that, uh, uh, opioid, opioid money for this community.
Mr. Skaif, we just introduced it. That's all we planned tonight. We haven't voted on it yet.
I'm saying, but.
Again, I'm not even going to say it.
It's going to happen. Y'all know it.
Not asking the mayor. The mayor's not setting up there. Ask the council.
Yeah, right.
Council needs to ask the mayor. I'm tired of hearing that fucking shit, too.
Regarding ASME, the raises will be on for Friday and they will also receive their back pay Friday.
You are our representatives.
Thank you.
You are our council. You need to ask the mayor.
Yeah, right.
Yes, any more questions or discussion?
So next time that's said to me next month, I'm going to say that.
Yeah.
All in favor of introduction of this ordinance? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
You are our, you're our representatives.
Resolution.
You need to fucking ask the mayor.
Yeah.
Resolution three dash twenty-five, a resolution of approval for the twenty twenty-four changes to the official zone maps.
That then takes us down to. Okay, the. Resolution seven. Okay, here we go.
Man, look at that good looking felt. Not that one. That guy with the blue champion.
Yeah.
Sweatshirt on.
That doesn't happen. What happens then with the police department?
We do.
Okay.
What would have, what?
Twenty-five. This list, just to be clear.
And we're not going to.
That's a bunch of bullshit what they're saying up there.
Seven dash twenty-five.
Yeah.
Resolution of the common council of the city of Muncie, Indiana, approving the collective bargaining agreement with the, with the Greg Winters Memorial Fraternity Order of Police Lodge, number eighty-seven.
Is there anyone here to?
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution seven dash twenty-five.
Motion's been made and seconded.
These presidents are out there to make money for their people. I understand that.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Union presidents, I understand that a hundred percent. They're going to throw numbers up there and these guys have no fucking clue what you're talking about.
Sorry, I was back there fanning myself trying to step out in the hallway. I'm a little hot blooded. It's warm in here. For those of you that don't know, my name is Brandon Qualls. I'm the president of the Greg Winters Memorial Fraternal Order of Police Lodge eighty-seven here in Muncie. I appreciate you taking a few minutes to hear me out. This contract is an attempt to try and move our department into being competitive with other agencies in the state. We'd appreciate your support for this contract. Historically, over the decades, and I'm not meaning anyone in this room, I'm talking long-term. Municipalities have been able to underpay their law enforcement all across country because there was a line of civilians lined up down the street and around the block. Willing to come and answer the call and serve their community. Unfortunately, all across country, that is not the case anymore. Departments all over the country are struggling to properly staff their departments in order to serve their community. Officers are actually a rare thing. The last several years, the agencies have actively.
I get it.
Actively recruiting from other agencies to fill the vacancies within their own.
That's what their job is.
Um, Governor Braun has been talking about property tax reform, property tax reform, which could potentially cut property tax revenues by fifteen to twenty percent. That's, those are different things we're hearing. I know that it has gone through several iterations. Do you have any projections on what Muncie is going to lose in property tax income just in general?
I know what the original SB one stated, but that was already adjusted down by the Senate. And it's in conference committee now, so I wouldn't want to speculate on where it is at this point.
And let me tell you, when they say that, and for the people that are out there wanting it, I'm going to tell you, I don't know. It had a hearing today and I know that they said that Braun and, uh, uh, Todd Houston had come to some kind of an agreement. I've been hearing from a really reliable source in the state house. That says that the, uh, representatives are going to put a lot back in on what the Senate took out. So just FYI.
But I, I'm pretty convinced something's going to happen.
Some, something's, what's going to happen?
That they will.
I'm pretty convinced something's going to happen.
And therefore.
Well, they've only been talking about it for.
That's just a really, I love, I love that. That was his, what a weird ass thing to say.
I don't know. I've not heard any of the discussions today. I know there were several mayors there today, but, uh, they, they were. They were. I, I don't, I don't know where it is at this point. I know it's in conference committee, so.
And so if we have property tax revenue losses, how, how are we going to address those?
Well, I think we will have to all get together and figure out the best method.
Who's spending Edit money?
Is probably not ideal. Um, you know, there's, there's old Chinese proverbs that say eighty percent of what you worry about doesn't come to pass. So why don't we wait and see where they are? Uh, they're just now into the second third. Uh, so let's let them get through the second third, then we'll get into the final third of the, of the committee. But I, but believe me, I talk with the, the state senators and state representatives regularly, uh, and did today.
But.
Stating my opinion, but I don't have a vote.
Okay.
So I can't speculate.
But you do understand why I've asked if we're going to be losing a significant portion of our property tax revenues, why? That would cause concern.
Absolutely. That's why I said we'll all get together and figure it out.
Mr. President.
I will, I'm going to hold him to that. That he's going to, we'll all get together. Cause what I think that what he means by that is I'll get together with Matt and Craig. And we might tell, we might tell Dale, we might tell Dale Basham, but. Yeah, no.
Cause he don't talk much.
Yeah.
But from the original, which started out at.
Yeah, I, I have.
Yeah, well, I'm just going to say it for the public knowledge. Okay. So, um, the original was starting off at like two and a half million dollars lost. Only, and that's only the first year, then continuing to go.
And it's three point one for the county.
They, yeah, and we're just talking about the city because we're city council right now, right? So that's, you know, and that's only, that's only the city, you know, that doesn't include schools and library and all of that. Um, then the second, the amendment, the amended version came down to two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, you know, so I mean, it did, they did, you know, but right now, like you say, it's in committee. So we're talking somewhere in between that, right? So just, just, you know, for the general public so that we can know what kind of numbers we're talking about. You know, it's a lot of money.
We will, we will feel it whether it's two hundred and fifty thousand and we will feel it a lot more if it's two point four million.
Yes. Okay.
But we'll work together and figure out the best route to go forward. Absolutely.
But our state has how many billions? In the black?
Yeah, right.
Any other questions? Comments?
Once again, Audi Barber. I want to pay these guys as much as we can afford. And, and with that, you know, discuss the, uh, tax reform, property tax reform. It's not been done in the last eight years, so I don't see it coming happening, but it could possibly happen this time. But, uh, the thing about it is. I believe that this contract that you guys are getting ready to adopt as a resolution. Needs to be tied in with the raises you guys are given because once you accept this in as a resolution. Then I think the language in there, then you have to approve. The money to give them the raise. In the resolution that you guys just passed. Does that make sense? So you're going to pass this resolution saying that this is the, the, uh, contract that the city police and the Muncie Fire get. They get a five percent raise this year, a ten percent raise next year. Now, in order to go back and, and it does say that in the resolution, it's not the contract?
From what, uh, President Qualls just said, it's contingent on.
Yeah.
Those increases. So right now, from what President Qualls said. From what President Qualls just said, it's contingent on those increases. So right now, from what President Qualls said, it's five percent this year. And then if we do not do anything.
Understand that. Understand it's five percent this year, but you gotta wait next week or next month to come back and give them the raises after you've already given the raise in there. Does that make sense? You're voting on two different pieces of property or two different ordinances or resolutions that should be put together.
And I understand what you're saying, but I think this is retroactive. Is that, is that correct, President Qualls? Yes.
So it's retroactive?
Yes.
So if you pass the resolution, it's retroactive that they automatically get the raises? Because you're going to come next, because you guys just voted on the, on the first passing of the raises.
We've introduced the.
The raises.
We've introduced the appropriation to cover the five percent raises for twenty twenty-five. We've introduced the salary ordinance, which will increase those salaries for twenty twenty-five. And then we are considering adopting the, the contract, which will most certainly increase the salary.
I see what you said there. Yes.
Right, I understand that. Okay, just take the ten percent out for now. So you're going to introduce this, you voted to, to bring up the, the five percent raise. But now you're going to do this contract in a resolution that is forcing your hands to automatically have to give them their five percent raise. Because the contract that you guys are going to pass tonight has the language that says five percent raise. So why do we have to have an ordinance to change it to give them their five percent raise? Does that make sense? You see what I'm saying?
Because the law requires it. The law requires a change for the salary ordinance.
Right.
So once you. Has to be a two reading process.
Okay. So once you pass this contract, they automatically get their raises.
Subject to the salary ordinance being increased.
Right.
And adopted.
But then they can go back to the contract and say, well, you agreed to give it to us. So.
I, what you're saying makes sense. I mean, I, I get what you, I get what you were getting at and it is weird they do it that way.
It is.
I understand that they've got to read it once and do it, but you still should tie those two, the ordinance and the resolution together.
They should be.
Local thirteen forty-eight IAFF AFL slash CIO CIC. I don't know those initials so well. Not all of them anyway.
Local thirteen forty-eight.
To adopt this resolution.
And this is, I swear, this is.
My name's Jason Chafin. I'm the.
This is Jason Chafin's most favorite place in the world to be. Jason Chafin finds him, fancies himself a, just a true politico. He gets off on all of this stuff. This is his, he loves this. This is his deal. And, uh, I, he's just, I don't know.
He had to go to school to get his.
First, I wanted to start out by saying thanks for putting the cops ahead of us because it's all thunder. But no, actually I want, I do want to thank in serious, uh, the administration, finance committee, Mr. Mashroom said in all of our meetings throughout negotiations, you know, I mean, basically up to this point, we've all worked together to find the monies, to do what we can do as a city right now with what we have, you know, which is it enough? It's not enough. I mean, we kind of, you know, like, uh, and I can reiterate some of the things that we deal with. It's basically the same as the FOPs, you know, um, you know, we, uh, I've lost four members since January one, you know, of this year, three of which were our trained paramedics that were, you know, that were training, you know, which is, you know, big losses. You know, and we'll continue to be a training ground. We'll continue to lose.
Do you know? Do you know that their, uh, civilian, uh, paramedics are still not in any of the unions?
They're not ever going to be.
I know. I just, I just thought that was interesting that they were working on that and they all developed a book for it. And, you know, there was a bunch of smoke and mirrors with that weirdness.
Yep.
It's our recent.
They want to get rid of them is what.
Right. And that's what's going to happen. And they're going to come in and say, hey, we need, uh, ten more people to get rid of these guys.
Right.
Which is the, again, a little bit more exact than the police, because we don't have sheriffs and other people. Most every fire department in the city is, is a per seventy-seven fine fire department, if they're paid fire department. About a hundred and twenty-three fire departments in the state of Indiana that's a paid fire department. And for the most part, they're all in perf. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, before the ten percent raise we got last year, we were eighty-eight out of that hundred and twenty-three. That's where we started in twenty twenty-three. We've got the ten percent raise and it jumped us to sixty-four. You know, this year with the five percent, we dropped to seventy-three, to seventy-two. I mean, you know, I mean, but why? I mean, seventy-three departments in the city of Indiana, obviously we're, this is, this is March, so we're already kind of behind the eight ball. So we kind of know what everybody else has done because it took us a little bit longer to get to this point than most of the other cities in the state.
Yeah, is it? The stumble foot, that's gross. He, he has me blocked as well.
Forty-four departments.
Who does?
Dan on Facebook.
Oh, really?
Yep. And when I get this, uh, lawsuit with, uh, Sprouls figured out, I'm going to drop him a copy off at his front door.
But, uh, President, uh.
Let him know he's next.
In Henry County, they passed a half a percent let and gave their, all their city employees, public safety included, um, a thirty-one percent raise over two years. You know, but Newcastle Fire Department makes more money than the Muncie Fire Department now by, they're about seven spots ahead of us on that certified salary last night. Yeah, they're eight miles away. You know, I mean, and they take way less, way, way less runs than we do.
It's because you guys decided to go fire based.
Seventeen thousand eight hundred calls last year.
No, and they've only got seventeen thousand people in your town.
Whether, you know, medical transports to the hospital, house fires. I mean, you know, these aren't ten minute calls, five minute calls most of the time. These are, these are, you know, when we took seventeen thousand eight hundred with the staff of a hundred and twenty-two, if we're fully staffed, which the majority of the time we're not fully staffed. We took, and that ratio, seventeen thousand eight hundred calls with a hundred and twenty-two people, put us the busiest fire department in the state of Indiana. There's no one that can beat us, you know, that ratio. I mean, the, the departments that take more calls than us all have four hundred, five hundred, you know, Indianapolis, Fort Wayne. You know, they, they all have hundreds more, South Bend, Evansville, they have hundreds more firefighters. Uh, and so. For capital.
And they've got a bigger tax base too.
Yeah, well, yeah, sure.
Again, you know, we thank everybody for what they've been able to do and what we can continue to keep working towards as a community.
You've got to compare.
Our people, you know, we did a lot of things.
Apples to oranges, apples to apples.
What we call it in-house.
Instead of apples to oranges.
Uh, version of the certified physical agility testing is one way we found and one way we've pushed as a union and as administration is if we can get people to apply that live here in Muncie, they'll be less likely to leave, even with our pay being less. I mean, you know, because they're taking care of.
They don't even live in the county, dude.
Right.
So way we're prior to twenty twenty-four, or maybe we got done late twenty-three, is you apply to be a fire department anywhere in the state of Indiana, you had to have a CPAT card, is what they call it. It stands for Certified Physical Agility Test. And you take that card and there's only a few places in Indiana where you can get one of these cards.
I'm just.
Have less, a lower tax than we have. The way they've kind of, at least our governor has said, you know, we're going to pass this and you guys got to deal with it.
Um, and the, the last time you did, the fire department did go out into the community and the police department as well. And I think that what, uh, council person, Salvi had said in regards to pamphlet, I think we actually used like those totals into real objects, like this is going to be like a twenty ounce coke or whatever it was.
Right.
Um, so those would be very useful if and when that discussion comes up. Um, and also really quickly, also I don't want to slight, uh, President Qualls, he also was very willing to give us information regarding his contract. It's just, uh, President, um, Chafin.
Newcastle's getting a thirty-four percent raise over the next three years.
And then I call Brandon and I make sure he gets it.
So I didn't want you to feel like you, you did not, the police department did an excellent job. So the FOP did an excellent job.
See, that's what I'm saying. He just said it was over two years.
But, um, I'm used to.
Yeah. So it's three years. That's a little bit different. And I think you said that backwards stumble foot. You mean a fifteen minute seminar in an hour.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Once again, Audi Barber, uh, maybe we can get the mayor to commit a little bit of his edit money toward these raises. Maybe guys, would that be a possibility, ma'am?
Now listen to this. Mark this down, guys.
Any of your edit money toward raises toward the fire department, police department?
Now, of course you didn't hear him, but listen to what Audi says, because Audi then, Audi tell, Audi tells you what he says here. Hey, listen. This is really big.
Once again, Audi Barber, uh, maybe we can get the mayor to commit a little bit of his edit money toward these raises. Maybe you guys, would that be a possibility, ma'am? Would you be able to commit any of your edit money toward raises toward the fire department, police department? Four and a half million.
Oh, so all you said was four and a half million. What, what did he say? Can?
The mayor, when I looked at the mayor, he was like, uh, 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 and then, uh, Wigg, Wiggle Wiggles spoke up and said that they're using edit money for, um, ASME.
Yeah.
For the ASME raises. So in two months, when they come back and they get their contract passed and they want to fix the salaries for all the city employee, ASME employees to get their raises and they're wanting money from the council, then we damn sure better be using edit money.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes. So keep that in mind. Cause I, I would be shocked if that's the case. I don't, I don't think he can do it. I don't know that he can do it.
I don't know.
Any other questions?
Meaning, I don't think, I, I don't think we have enough for everything else that he has lined up in edit. I don't know how, I don't know, man.
This is from the audience. Okay, motion has been made in second. It roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so they, they vote, so both of those resolutions. Now, keep in mind, the resolution is passed because they only read the resolution once.
Right.
So the resolution's done. That's passed, it's passed. The ordinances are both, uh, introduced. They'll be brought up next month. They will both be, they will both be passed and that was, um, ordinance, uh, ordinance eleven twenty-five and ordinance twelve twenty-five. And then these were resolution seven twenty-five and, uh, eight twenty-five. And so those are, those are, are basically, are basically done.
Their contracts are good. Now, they get three to, three, they get a five percent raise this year and a.
Yeah.
And, uh, three to ten percent raise next year or more.
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, um, I want, I want you guys to hear this. Audi gets up and talks a little bit more, says basically the same thing. Uh, I want you guys to hear this.
I want to ask if any of you have heard or you have any understanding of, uh, what's going on with the crisis center? Muncie Crisis Center, uh, started being talked about in the press in March of twenty twenty-three. Uh, in that article, the mayor said it had been, uh, in the works the last two years. They said they started looking at the hub uh, for twenty, uh, for the crisis center in twenty twenty-two, September twenty twenty-two. And there's been all kinds of stories basically since November. People said, oh, it's open, it's not open. Uh, some people have said that, uh, it's open from eight to five, Monday through Friday, which doesn't really seem productive because I feel like most people have crisis after those hours. So that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Uh, I've been there several times since they've said it's been open and Meridian Services has been, uh, running it. The door's been locked. Nobody's been inside. Um, uh, US postal notes have been stuck on the outside. I was there one day. Merry Maids was trying to get inside to clean the place and nobody would let them open the door. So, you know, we've paid a lot of money for this place and I would assume that we're still paying for utilities or whatnot here. So, uh, I would like to try to figure out if we can get some kind of understanding of what's going on with it. So, uh, I mean, I understand that maybe you guys don't know currently, but uh, we'll come back, I'll come back next meeting and I'll ask you again, but if you could find out between now and then, that would be fantastic. I think the, the public, uh, deserves to know, you know, what's going on there. I, I've heard, uh, some people say that basically we're out of it, that Meridian Services is running it now. But I think that's, that's nuts if that's the case because we paid a lot of money for that. And so, uh, I'm concerned about that. And then, um, I'll save, save for next month. Okay. Thank you very much. That's it.
Mr. Billbury, I'd like to get ahold of you before next meeting and let you know what's going on with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got it.
You won't hear. That's all you'll hear from me.
Get a little bit of an update on this recently. The whole council got this, I mean, it's not much, but, um, the mayor did share with us that, um, it's been open about a month now and at the request of Meridian Health and the, and police social workers, they're doing a slow rollout of the program and they'll continue to increase the scope. So that's the most.
Okay, so two or three days ago, but, meaning sometime last week at the time of this, on Monday, the mayor had sent out an email saying that there has been a slow rollout, which is what, um,
Sarah.
Jackie said uh, to me a couple of weeks ago. Audi's better half, uh, sent me a picture a month ago with some cars in the parking lot. Uh, within about thirty minutes of Darla sending me the pictures, I drove by there and there was not a car in sight. So I was, I'm confused because Darla sent me a picture and the, the cars were there. And I got like ready and I went that way and then there were no cars. And I walked up to the building and the thing was closed. And, uh, I've been there multiple times. I, I drive back and forth from the north end to the south end, all over Muncie like daily. You know, going back and forth. I live on the way, way north end and my grandparents live on the way, way south end. We, we are making like the north and south ends of the counties. And I drive back and forth to their place and around a lot of, a lot. And I have never seen this place open.
It'll be open by October.
What? It'll be, yeah, uh, yeah, October. October, when? We don't know. So, but I want you to listen to this now. What happens next after, after what Sarah says here? Listen to this.
Three cents I've heard about it. This week?
She said this week and this was Monday night. So I'm kind of confused, but I'll, I'll let her, you know, I'll let her go on that. I don't, maybe she means Friday or something. I don't know. But listen to what the communications director for the city of Muncie says. That's right, stumble foot.
Okay, is there any?
Amber Green, communications director for the city. I just want to reiterate the email. It is open. It has been open for a little over a month. It is only taking clients from police calls at this time. That is at the request of Meridian. Meridian is looking to do a slow roll because it is new. It is not like anything that we have in the community currently. And they want to make sure they get it right. So that is at the request of them and we are waiting to hear from them as to getting more services going. And updates are provided to you when they are provided to us.
Thank you.
Okay, that's fantastic. And I, I'm not taking this out on, on the city yet. Um, but what I'm going to do is, so I guess, yeah, we're in the middle of the week. So maybe starting next week, maybe I've got to go there every day. You know, like go there, what time they say they start? Nine to eight?
Yeah.
So maybe I'll go there at nine oh five, nine fifteen and, and then go there at like noon and then go there at five every day and find out what the hell's going on. Because if Meridian is telling Muncie that they're doing this and they've been open, I'm, I'm telling you, I just don't, I just don't believe they're open. And I'm not, I'm not taking that out on Dan even yet. It's like if Meridian's telling Dan this and they're lying, I feel like that's a problem that the city needs to address. And I'm not saying they're lying.
Listen, you didn't hear what they said. They're only taking them by appointments by when the police call them. So the police call over to Meridian Services and somebody comes over there and meets them there.
I'm going to find that out. So what I'll do.
Talk to them for five or 10 minutes and take them to jail and the way they go, they don't even use, I bet they ain't even used any of them rooms to have to have Merry Maids in there to clean the place.
So I'm going to, I'll file a record request for dispatch and get, get how, whatever, what we've done in the last month. What's really going to piss me off, what's really going to piss me off is to find out that people have been getting paid for not a damn thing.
For not even being there.
Not even being there. Cause to me, that's going to be, that's like what? So that's the end of the meeting. That, that was the, the county, uh, the city council meeting. Um, you know, I do, wait, wait, there, well, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I do want to play, that's not the end end. I want everybody that's been concerned about what we're talking about with the city, uh, council and county council and all these so-called Republicans who are, uh, saying that they do not want the governor who's a Republican, uh, they don't want this, uh, Senate bill one to happen and these property tax reforms. I want you to listen to what Republican Roselvy does right here. And you're right, stumble foot, that is highly probable. Listen to this.
Yes, I do. Uh, we have a commissioner, a Delaware County Commissioner here. I'm going to put you on the spot, uh, if you don't mind. I just want to thank, um, the Delaware County Commissioners for their latest resolution regarding, um, that was a very, um, great move on your part and hopefully we will emulate it on city council and come alongside of you in support.
So instantly when she said this, I was like, no, it's not the, it's not the commissioners. The commissioners didn't do it. It was the council and she's talking about resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four, which was the Delaware County Council's resolution in opposition to Senate Bill One. And so what, listen to what happens here. And you just heard her. She said, I hope that the council emulates it. I hope we do something like that here. So she's wanting the council. I would look for this probably as next month. I mean, yeah, they're going to have to get on it because yeah, uh, yeah.
Yep. It may be passed by then.
Yeah, right.
Please come up to, if that's okay with you, to explain exactly what you guys did.
He's like, I didn't do it. I don't know, but I, but I'm pretty sure that the commissioners are on board with it.
Which, which?
The one regarding the tax caps from the budget, the budget. I think that was. I think that was the county commission, yes.
I wish I could take credit, I can't.
Oh, it was a county.
And Stephen Brand says, I wish I could take credit. So he's for it too. I mean, I, you know, if I thought that the resolution was a shitty resolution, and there's no way I'd back it, I wouldn't say, I wish I could take credit for it.
Rhinos.
So, I just want to know what we've got going on.
Republicans are supposed to be tax cutters, not tax
Dude, this is, we are through the looking glass, man, I don't know, uh, Janet Grenand, uh, any, any major, big, 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 big supporter of Brand, what are, what have we got going on here? I'm gonna have to call him and talk to him about this, because I was shocked.
Now.
Go ahead.
We need to take a moment of silence to, um, 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 shit, yeah, two fourteen's completely dead.
Yeah, right, yeah, we, yeah.
I don't know if you've talked about that too much or not, but
Yeah.
Take a moment of silence for the, uh, for our fallen brothers. Two fourteen, because it is completely dead.
That's a good thing. That's an amazing thing, Phil Nichols and all that nonsense is gone. Now, I don't know that it's necessarily a good thing, the direction that it's going, I, you know, that time will have to tell.
Time will tell.
Time will tell, but I, 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 I don't like political parties, so I'm not caught up, I mean, I, you know, we'll see what goes on. Uh, still have to touch base with Tim Overton and see what's going on there. Uh, I plan to do that, but, yeah, David, did you hear that? What's, it's like, dude, what, what's going on, look at that smile there, he's happy with that. Nuts.
They're all resigned, they're all rhinos.
I will.
They, they think they're Republicans, but they're not, because they're passing these, they're, they're wanting to raise these taxes on everything, so they can have bigger government and spend more money. That is not, that's not the motto of the Republican Party. That is not, so that makes them rhinos.
It's, it's so crazy, well, and we've been going quite some time here, and we're not gonna go through the whole meeting, but I do, I do have to show this one part, because this is very much in con- connection with it. And there wasn't a whole lot that went on at the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting, but there was one specific part, and I want to share this. And then I wanna, I wanna talk about this and explain a little bit of what I've known, what, what I've heard, and, uh, just kinda go from there and kinda let you guys understand, uh, you know, what I've heard about this, and, uh, what I know, let me see here. All right, so this is the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting, this also occurred on Monday. Okay, and amazingly, this is also going to be this, I, I'll, uh, let me, let me get down to the Commissioners Meeting here real quick and tell you. Uh, I think it's another resolution, it's like they, they keep killing me on these resolutions, I'm like, what, what are you guys doing on this? Okay, so, okay, here, what?
What?
Yeah, right. I'm never calling him a Democrat, Tenth Councilman, I just, because I, true, Audi's not really a Democrat.
I'm not really a Republican or a Democrat.
Yeah, he's, he's like a libertarian.
No, I'm right down the middle.
Okay, so this is, this is Resolution, uh, twenty twenty-five oh five of the Commissioners. Okay, and so I want you guys, I want you guys to listen to this. Um, there's not a whole lot that goes on in the meeting, you can watch both of these meetings on our, uh, on the Political Spotlight, if you want to see them all. There, there's a lot of good stuff that, that's important, but there's not, we don't have a whole, like, two hours worth of topic. I just want you to hear this one resolution that happens here, and, uh, we're gonna try to get here.
But Chris, regardless whether Democrat or Republican, I'm forced to choose a party to run against.
Absolutely, yeah, I, I'm aware.
And libertarians don't ever get elected for anything.
Okay, that's not true, I just, I don't know what's gonna happen in Muncie. Where, I don't like this ordeal, where we have an elected representative, Elizabeth Rowway, who is working for this, uh, EDC, uh, Economic Development thing, and wanting money, and I, I'm not, I don't, I'm not into all of that, I don't, I just don't think that's a good idea.
As long as she's got her conflict of interest filed.
The whole, I don't like the whole idea of there being multiple people like that, or one person in multiple roles.
New jail was built, the well that was there for the original Wilson Building was expanded, and there was a, uh, I have one doctor and one nurse practitioner, and then the workplace health partners, as we know.
Okay, we're close.
Two doctors, now they just hired another one, okay.
Their microphones suck.
Yeah.
Um, the, the cell tower agreement, yeah, this would be good, some questions about that. I, I brought it with me, um, so, last month we did, uh, an agreement with Crown Castle, and John watched the meeting.
Not in Muncie, I can't stumble.
Specifically about the length of the term, asking
We discussed this at the Friends of America meeting tonight, Stephen isn't a Rhino. He just wants to know where the money will come from for schools, roads, fire, emergency departments, if property taxes are eliminated. Well, I would, I would have to say that I think that the governments should probably start tightening their belt. I think it would start by, by stacking their edit money, rather than spending it as loosely that they do, just willy-nilly all over the place. Might be a good place to start, um, and all of that, I just, I'm really cut a lot of, you know, there's other spinning to cut. I'm just really concerned by, I mean, because here's what they're doing, we're not getting that from these people, we're not getting that from these people. Brand didn't stand at the podium and say that. He smirked, kind of like, slightly, whiplashly like, and said, I wish that I would have done it, I wish I could take credit for it. And that, you know, leaves kind of a bad taste in people's mouths, who don't necessarily go to the Friends of America Tuesdays, or whatever, you know? Like, what about all the people out there that voted for him, and are like, what's going on? Why is he fighting with what the governor wants, like, aren't, aren't we wanting what Beckwith and the governor wants? Like, you know, what side of all of this are we supposed to be on? So, uh, but, but before we pile on him too much.
Kate, hi Kate.
For a stinking chair.
What?
He's trying to cut spending, but then approves thirty thousand dollars for a stinking chair.
Well, it's not just one chair, it's a lot of chairs, but
What, ten chairs?
It was the, the cheapest it could be, I get it. Hey, I will tell you, I have heard, and I, I, I mean, I will give him credit, like, I like Stephen, I still like Stephen.
But there's a lot of fact that can be cut, and a lot of ways to cut corners.
Hey, I was a nine-one-one dispatcher at one time, it's been twenty-five, twenty-eight, about twenty-eight years ago. And those seat, those chairs are set in twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And you've got people that are, that are three, four, five hundred pounds sitting in them. So, and then you've got some that aren't that much, but
Yeah.
They do, they do get a lot of wear and tear.
Yeah.
And if you can lease them, and if, because they break down a lot, they did twenty-eight years ago. If you can lease them and, and let them just keep coming in and bringing them new chairs, instead of having to buy new chairs, that may not be a bad thing. You gotta understand. Think about it, set your chair for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and see what happens to it.
Yeah, no question. There, there's, yeah, all right, let's listen to this resolution here.
Here's the change, time may not be reserved or yielded.
Okay, yeah, here, here's this.
So, I don't know who's prepared to talk about this, I'm glad to jump in, if anyone else needs to talk about it, can you say that again?
CCATT LLC.
That's who we're adding to.
And so this is Delaware County Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five. And I'll tell you, before they get into it, this, what this is, is the, oh, I don't have it here. The resolution, I have it here, the resolution is amended resolution of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners establishing policies and procedures to protect decorum and foster the effective administration of public meetings. Okay, now, I was like, hmm, interesting, what's this, let's listen.
Through AT&T, uh, subtenant on the cell tower department, doing business as CCATT LLC, and we give permission for John to continue to negotiate with your contract, rather than a thirty. Yes, we have a second, please, Professor Regan.
Okay, it's the next thing they talk about here.
All right, uh, early ordinance for first reading, ordinance for second reading.
That's right, Kate.
What Kate say?
Resolution for approval, resolution.
Silencing me, decorum means silencing people?
Yes. Decorum also affects the administration of public meetings. So, I don't know who's prepared to talk about this, I'm glad to jump in, if anyone else needs to talk about it, this, yeah, I mean, I think it's a few, this is the decorum for the public meetings. It addresses your public hearings in your public meetings, um. So there was a new statute, um, uh, recently by the state, and this brings us up to date there, I do have a couple of, uh, just discussion points, uh, under section B, one B, um, it says, currently members of the public may speak during a public meeting as required by the statutes. Maybe that language as required by the statutes might be better as allowed by state statute, and we specifically point out that state statute, since this is why they're updating it. And then in C, um, the Commissioners, at their sole discretion, may provide a public comment period at the end of the meeting to discuss. And I think we should drop the words "to discuss", and just leave it free, the Commissioners, at their sole discretion, may provide a public comment period at the end of the meeting, during which time individuals may give an opportunity to discuss the question. And then, significant change here from the practice that the Commissioners have had in the past in section I, uh, it says, uh, each speaker may only speak once, simply given a maximum of three minutes to speak unless a short period of time is set forth by the Commissioners at the start of the public comment period. Here's the change, time may not be reserved or yielded to other speakers. And once an individual has finished speaking, that individual is remaining in time, if any, as well, that's a change from that practice. I, I'm
Yeah, but I question that, that question, I mean, I, I'm, I'm feeling someone else.
Okay, you agree with that?
I think that one out, I, I'm part of it.
Don't take it for out.
Just that part of it for the yielding.
Yeah.
But, Melissa, time may not be used or yielded.
What do you want, really? No, um
You want it to be that time may be
No, we don't, we don't want time, yeah, we don't want anyone to do that. Leave it in.
Oh, just that?
Yes, right, and then, under section R, it states the Delaware County Sheriff shall be empowered to remove an attendee and/or speaker from the meeting if the speaker and/or attendee are directed by the President of the Board of Commissioners, so I reached
No, they can't do that.
And asked him if he would, you know, hear his response, and, uh, pretty straightforward.
Listen what he says.
Response, um, basically said, um, the sheriff should be willing to enforce this as long as a person is clear and obvious public nuisance, or, or has committed a crime. And so, you know, we don't want, we don't need any overzealous board members trying to silence somebody, it needs to be obvious, and this gives them three warnings. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, that, I, I think it needs to, uh, it doesn't say that anywhere. Actually, it
O has the
Has the number on it, yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, yeah, the President of the Board of Commissioners may issue up to three warnings to the pending, this is many, yeah, you could go, I'm good, you could go DEFCON three, I'm good, okay. Do you want to table this until I get the correction?
I, you can have heard it, I think I would like to make a motion to approve the language in B, C, and D.
Have a motion to approve the resolution pending the changes. Uh, second, second, have a motion of second, hold call please, Professor Brand, yes, Professor Regan, now. Professor Henry, yes. All right.
All right, so.
She wants to be able to shut them up.
Let, no, 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 let me, let me, because it sounds like, uh, let's just recount this for folks that kinda have a hard time hearing, because it sounds like they're shoveling rocks into their mouth, and then chewing on them while speaking into the microphone. And it's because the microphones suck, and they are working on getting better microphones, they are working on that, so hopefully we'll have that soon, here's the deal. That resolution was apparently, here's what I'm hearing from sources, this resolution was apparently put forward, and it's got something to do with, uh, trying to keep the peace and smooth things over, so they can, you know, get rid of some bad people and do this and that with solar or whatever, and so, and what I'm hearing is, Henry, and Henry really didn't like the part where you could share time, so like, if I'm up talking, and my three minutes runs out, Audi could be sitting in the audience, and Audi could say, I will give him my three minutes, and then I could continue on for three minutes. Brand removed that, what he did in, in sections B and C, I don't care anything about. I agree with everything Brand did, that was just cleaning up language and making the, the resolution run smoother, I have no issue, okay? My issue with what Brand said in section I is this. Brand is the one that proposed doing away with being able to get time from another person in the audience. Brand is the one that got rid of it, not Sherry, not Shannon. I get it, if it's something that one of them wants, have them talk about it. And if Brand is making some kind of backroom deal, vote on it or whatever, but to the fact that Brand brought it forward, strike, that's, I don't like that, that's a bad move, okay? The other thing is, they wanted it. Brand talked about it, Brand voted on it, Henry voted on it, and Sherry voted no! So if Brand would have just voted no.
It would have been dead.
It would have been, it wouldn't have happened. So that's why I get the idea of trying to make, um, deals and smooth things over and do this or that, but I, I almost like Ryan's way of better, of just voting the way that you intend to vote, and if it doesn't go the way you want, and you're the odd man out, well, at least people know what you stand for.
Right.
And you, you are what you are, and you can explain that, because again, like, like the, why, why Stephen is against, uh, Senate Bill One all of a sudden, he, he, he's not been going out of his way to explain this, I didn't, I, Brand doesn't have social media, okay? He has his Stephen Brand for Delaware County Commissioner, uh, page, okay, that he hasn't switched over to being like Stephen Brand Delaware, you know, Delaware County Commissioner, it's just, i- it's still the campaign page. Okay, so that's, that's that, all right, it's not, it's not been a, there's not been a switch over, let me get this hole in here. Okay, so, um, it's still Stephen Brand for Delaware County Commissioner, and the last post that he's made on this was January twenty-seventh. So he's not going to this and making posts, okay? And now, look, I got, he's got a lot of stuff on his, uh, plate, okay? I understand that he's got a lot going on. And I respect a lot of stuff that Brand's doing. One of those things that he needs to really shore up in the very near future is meeting the public where they are. And what I mean by that is, I appreciate that he's going to the Friends for America group, that is his group, and he's talking and doing all of that. But not everybody goes to that. I would have no problem going to it periodically when I have time, but I don't have a lot of free time to always be going to I don't have a lot of free time to always be going to extra meetings that I have to pick up along the way. But you know what I could do? I could go to my commissioner's social media page and read some kind of post or read some kind of follow up. He could do a video. You know what? I've heard a lot of times that Brand would be willing to, to talk to me anytime I want to talk to him. Great. Phones work both ways. If you're gonna do something that's specifically controversial, there's nothing wrong with you trying to bridge the gap and maybe make it feel like you're willing to be communicated with. Pick up the phone and call me. Explain what's going on.
Cause he knows you're gonna raise hell about it.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, right, 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 right. I like Brand. I support Brand. I want, I, I, I'm still very supportive of what Brand's doing. I think Brand is doing a good job. There have just been some things here lately that have called me to question him. And look, I don't care. I'll support him for the next four years. But you don't, you want to bet that I'm not gonna chew his ass every time I feel like it? I would be a hypocrite if I don't do that. It wouldn't be right for me to chew Dan's ass when I think Dan screws up and just leave Brand because I support Brand. That's not what this is about. This is not about protecting friends. It's about holding these people accountable.
And you do me the same way.
I, if you, when you win a, a council race and are on the council, I would chew your ass the same way. I'm friends with Rose Selvi and I've said nothing good about Rose Selvi tonight. You know, and I'll call her and I'll talk to her about these things and I'll tell her. So look, it's, it's not, it's not that way. I'm not that way. I like Brand and I support Brand, but you know, this is some questionable stuff, you know, whatever. So it is what it is, whatever the deal is there. Um, you know, I can get my stuff in three, three sessions. Now, I'm telling you, where, the people this hurts. The people this hurts are the solar people. Because let me tell you when that thing was most recently used. It was most recently used in the commissioners' meetings and council meetings for people who was there speaking out about solar. And they use this a lot. And, you know, Stephen said, well, you know what you can do? You, you can, uh, just get together and plan it out with your friends and just write down your speech and just get up there and read it. And then where you stop off, your friend can pick up. Look, I don't write down my speeches. I can get my stuff under three minutes. I know, I have a bullet point, know what I'm gonna say. When I'm up there and I run out of time, you know, I would really appreciate someone to be able to throw me three minutes and me be able to use a minute of it and then leave. You know, that would be, that would be beneficial. Also, the other thing, I don't give a shit what these people like to hear, don't like to hear. They are there working for us. So to hell with Rigan, to hell with him on this and to hell with Brand on this. This was a bad decision. Now, I have to.
Well, they tabled, they tabled the I part.
No, 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 no. They did not. They did not. They, it, it's voted through. It absolutely 1,000% voted through. I have the, I have, he's, he sent me the, um, the, the resolution as, as it is. What they said was they would just go through and vote it that way and that was. So it passed. It passed two to one. She voted no for it. He voted yes for it. Blows my mind. But I do love what Skinner said. Because.
Yes.
In this thing in here, alright, it says in point R, Delaware County Sheriff shall be empowered to remove the attendee and or speaker from the meeting if the speaker and or attendee refuses to leave when directed by the president of the Board of Commissioners. Number one, number R, whatever you want to call it, letter R. The Delaware County Sheriff or any deputy thereof does not need the Board of Commissioners to empower them to do a damn thing. They are there and they're duly licensed and sworn law enforcement officers. They are able to act. If there is a crime in progress, they can act without the commissioners empowering them. So that language, I think, is complete bullshit. Number two, Brand reached out to Skinner to get his thoughts on this. And Skinner's ants, or answer was, uh, well, here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna act the way that I need to act if someone is committing a crime or it's clear that they are clearly disorderly and disruptive and doing something, you know, egregious. That he was not just going to allow a, uh, overzealous board to violate someone's rights. And I say to, to Skinner, hell yeah, brother. I appreciate that. And I fully understand where Skinner's coming from. And I, I definitely, you know, applaud him for that. So, uh, I know that Skinner, I, Skinner and Stanley that comes after him if Stanley runs uh, and wins, I, I know, I know that there, we're safe with them. So that's not an issue. And I'm not mad at Brand. I just like dude, you know, let, let's not do the dumb shit. The, you're, you're trying to fix problems where there wasn't an issue.
Right.
You know?
Yep, I agree. I agree. But they gotta realize it's not like the, it's not like the last night. Those people are elected officials and they gotta hold a corner, uh, decorum in that because they're elected officials. They're not the public at that point. So.
Yeah, right, 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 right. I just, I just always want these people to remember however big and however bad they get, they're still our employees. So I don't ever want my employee to tell me how to speak to them. I just, that doesn't work anyplace else you work and I don't think it should work in the government.
No, it won't.
So, well, very good, Audi. I appreciate your time and go ahead.
At some point, somebody's gonna test them on that.
Oh, absolutely.
And when they get a lawsuit and they have to pay out money, then so be it.
Sure, that's, that's the thing. I mean, I'm not somebody that, that just, people might think differently. I mean, think that I do that. I don't want to go to jail or something stupid to happen. I don't, I mean, it's not a fun thing going through lawsuits. It's a pain in the ass and all of that stuff. I would rather the government not do that. But I'm telling you, if I've got something to say and I feel that whatever I'm saying, I feel like it's appropriate. You know, I listen, I live by, I live by, uh, the Bible and my dad's rule. If you, uh, you're pay, as long as you're willing to pay the consequences, you can do whatever you want to do.
You can get the cookies out of the cookie jar.
If or when that time, alright? And if and when that time comes, that there's something I need to say, I believe I have a first amendment right while I'm in that building, speaking to my duly elected officials that I put there along with all the rest of you. And, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll see what goes on from there. I, you know, I just, I don't know.
Yep.
You know, whatever.
Alright, Chris, I'll be back next month on the, uh, council meeting.
Yeah, we'll have to see what goes on and.
There wasn't, you did cut that part out. I did get up and say I took three months off for a specific reason. Because three months to a lot of people some, seemed like a lot of time because I had people come up and say, well, you need to get back to the council meetings. You need to get back to the council meetings. So.
Three months, it's only three meetings.
Yeah.
But.
But that's what they're saying. Why was gone so long? Well, it's only three months.
You still followed what was going on. You just weren't in the meetings. I mean, you know, they, they, they live stream the shit. If there's something going on, you know, it's this, it's the winter time shit happens. It's not, you know, it is what it is.
What do you keep flashing off? Is your internet fucked up or something?
No, no, it's gotta be you.
Anybody else see that?
No.
About every 30 seconds you, you buffer.
That's you.
Okay.
Gotta be yours. Everything's going good here.
Okay.
So my, 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 uh, the youngest brother had a baby the other day and we've been dealing with that. Uh, but I will get over there and fix your computer.
Yeah.
Alright, man, I appreciate it.
Where I can go on to you and.
Yeah, sure.
Alright, have a good night, everybody. We'll see you guys soon.
Sir, I appreciate it.
Alright.
Have a good one.
Bye.
Thank you, sir. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, that's, uh, gonna do it for us with, uh, Mr. Audi Barber. I do, uh, wanna just give you guys a little bit, a little bit of a heads up. Uh, last night I kind of hinted that something was happening that was gonna give us just a little bit more of, uh, of a air of, of importance and, and, uh, giving us a little bit more standing in the world. And, uh, we did, uh, did finally, so the, in the past, I, I don't have the one from the, from the, uh, Southern District Court of Indiana. But, so the media passes that, that I've used for, over the years has been the one from the, um, Southern District, uh, Court of Indianapolis. And then, and then this one here is Press Association. Of course, a long, long, long time ago, I made me a, made me a perception as reality. But, uh, we are, uh, finally formally fully, uh, um, recognized by the Indiana State Government, uh, the, uh, Indiana State House. And, uh, the governor and the, uh, government of Indiana has, uh, finally recognized us as, uh, our, uh, uh, media for the state of Indiana. And so there we are, state of Indiana media, Christopher Bilbrey, the political spotlight. So, uh, just a little bit more stature and, uh, we can, uh, get in, uh, to a little, uh, more things and, uh, kinda keep these people on our toes a little bit more. So, uh, that was awesome and, uh, we will, uh, help keep these people accountable. So, alright folks, uh, that's gonna be it for tonight. Uh, we will be back tomorrow at nine PM and, um, oh, oh, oh. I forgot, if you want to read, or excuse me, watch Kate left, uh, um, Kate had a cut out, uh, so that threw me off. If you want to watch the, um, state of the city in the morning, it will be livestreamed right here. So you'll be able to watch it right here. And we'll have to compare this and see, uh, how wonderful, uh, that Dustin and Michelle have done. And I'm gonna try to get to the bottom and figure out why exactly they've done this. So. Alright folks, take care. Good night. Goodbye. We'll see you tomorrow. Uh, and that's it. Like the show. I got all discombobulated when Kate left. Bye.